That's it, we just comment.
Thank you Chairman Lyons and Commissioners, Kim Apperson, 415 South Sampson Trail. And live directly to the east of this project. And I know your hands are tied, you're reviewing this scenic route and design review for this. You recommended for denial twice. It was ultimately overridden by the county commissioners. And since February, you've seen it four times, this is the fifth time. If you're looking at the scenic ground and design review. The applicant just can't bring something to you that you can get through your criteria with. And I don't see anything different in this rendering versus the one that they had in May 20th. They changed up some colors, they didn't change up any kind of facade or the the look of the building other than what color they're gonna paint. And it's still a one big blank wall. Industrial building right across from our residential neighborhood, which is growing. And it's characteristic of being residential. We've got two new homes moving in just to the east of us. On one acre lots is becoming more and more residential, this is just an industrial. Eyesore of the neighborhood and they haven't, they really haven't done anything to try to. Make it compatible with the area. They just keep putting a different kind of color of paint on and it's still a big blank wall. The fence is still imposing, it does not have a pedestrian scale like it's supposed to. I just don't see how you can approve this if you couldn't approve it in May. Thanks.
Well, instead of dating, sorry. My name is Joe Byle, 415 South Sampson Trail. We've lived there for 31 years, well, not there for 31, 27 years there, 31 years in McCall. We watched the city, the town go from being a nice little community. To where we now have motels and residential areas, we've got. All these type of facilities and residential areas. And now you've got a scenic route, which is about to be destroyed. There's no question, this does not fit in a scenic route. It's just not there. It probably never will be because it is an industrial use. And no matter how you put it, no matter what the county commissioners say. It doesn't fit, it doesn't fit the community, it doesn't fit the scenic route. And it's going to be a mar on this community for the rest of its existence. And I can't imagine. The pressure you're probably under. But I can also imagine the pressure that I'm under by having something like this right across from me. It deteriorates my property values, it deteriorates my environment. And it changes the entire attitude of the community, there is absolutely nothing on Sampson Trail. That even comes close to what this thing looks like. Not even close, and I don't see that any effort has been made to actually make it fit in the community. All they want to do is make a buck off this thing. And. I don't know, I understand how strongly this issue is with with you people too. And I appreciate it, you know, maybe the final solution has got to go to a court or something like that, but. These kinds of things are ruining this community. And they're destroying residential areas and. I think the people are not going to put up with that, to tell you the truth. Things are going to have to come down and that's all my comment is, thank you.
Any other public comment before we go to response? Oh, good, there shouldn't be, let me take one more chance, anybody else online or on the phone wishes to comment regarding this application? Okay.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, just a couple of points. The comment that was made that this. Project does not fit on Sampson Trail and will be an eyesore compared to other development on the the road, that's just factually incorrect. There is an industrial building directly to the south of the property that has no aesthetic value. The applicant has worked diligently to revise this application, this is not the same application that was submitted. A year and a half ago, and it's certainly not the same application that was submitted in May. The applicant has heard the comments from the commissioners and has strived to make this an application that is both satisfactory to the community and to the commissioners. It is not one blank wall, originally this project proposed four buildings. The applicant has reduced it down to two and has opened up the site corridors through the project. Providing both aesthetic changes in the facade of the building, but also providing space gaps between the buildings themselves. There was a comment made that this application could not be approved in May and it shouldn't be approved now. The commissioners in their deliberation found that it did meet the criteria of scenic route and design review, but that they wanted to see if there could be improvements. To the aesthetic nature of the fence and the facade, so these applications can, could have been approved in May and they can be approved this evening. And we would respectfully ask for your approval on scenic ground and design review applications.
Alright, Commissioners, any questions for staff or applicant?
I got a question for staff. I wasn't here the last couple of meetings and. I want to make sure I understand this, has this gone through Valley County? Yeah, Valley County Planning and Zoning and has been approved by them? Or is the, are the county commissioners the ones that are approving this for us to do this kind of busy work to finish up this application? Where are we on on that?
Yes, to both of those, sort of. So originally you saw the full application grouped as a planned unit development. Conditional use permit, design review and scenic route review. You denied the designer view and scenic review, scenic route review at the planning and zoning commission level. And I cannot remember if this one was unappealed or appealed off the top of my head, I do not think it was appealed at that time, but the PUD and the CUP did go to. The Board of County Commissioners. They decided to approve the planned unit development and conditional use permit contingent on. Remanding or re-reviewing a design review and scenic route review application. So what you have before you is not the discussion of the use as a conditional use, it's the instruction and guidance of the Board of County Commissioners on. Finding what aesthetic answers and design and scenic route review answers can. Help assist this use in being compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Bill is on the big screen.
Yeah, no Meredith, I just wanted to help out if you needed it. I mean, I do want to point out that, I mean, with the changes, what was approved by the county commissioners is. Not completely the same project as is being presented to us, and so there are differences. How significant those differences are, I can't tell you because it's outside of the scope of my expertise, that's all I would add.
Bill, I have a, can I ask Bill a question? There is the, there's some notes here about. Whether the county commissioner required the inclusion of a subdivision flat, we've heard this go back and forth a lot in these. Five meetings that the intention was to. Sell them individually and that would require a subdivision flat. We have not seen that, so can we actually go ahead and approve? This project that's being presented to us?
From my recollection, I don't think that's required for our design review and scenic crowd, that's not one of the criteria we. That we consider, Meredith, am I missing something on this?
No, you're right, Bill, that's, that's all in the language of the, the county board of commissioners findings and conclusions, so. Based on the, the instructions that we've been using on this whole time is apply the design review and scenic route review standards here. Then the rest is math problems and logic problems for the county to figure out how to square.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, too, just as a point of order for Mr. Punkinney's comment regarding the changes to the site plan. I did confirm with the county attorney regarding how this would be handled if it went back to the county. As I stated on the, at the May 20th meeting, because it is a reduction in the scope of use, we're going from three buildings to two. It would be an administrative approval that would be approved by the county because it is a less impactful use now.
Are we, are we still in the public hearing or are we in deliberation?
Yes, yes, we are.
A public hearing still open?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure if, if there was additional evidence that it was included. Yeah, I mean, I don't have a response to that, I, I mean, if Brian Oki is prejudging these applications, that's on him. That's not how we do things.
Alright, if there's any other questions for staff or the applicant before we close the public hearing. Thank you Dave, I can tell you got one coming.
Yeah, I'm just, Mr. Asia, I'm sorry, I didn't pronounce that right, you have. It's obvious that nobody here likes this project, but you've been very stubborn. It's like, is there any reason that? Couldn't find something else to do in this property?
I'm sorry Dave, we can't ask those kind of questions, we gotta address the application as it is, we shouldn't take anything personal, we have to.
I'm just.
It, but it's, we gotta do this application.
Okay. And the.
Yeah.
So we have to answer the questions about fencing and.
We, yeah, we gotta go with this application, we can't ask in other questions, that's outside of our. Our.
Reason, period.
Mr. Chairman Commissioner Petty, I would say though that in deciding what was originally proposed for this project. The applicant chose something that they believed would have less of an impact. To services and community, for an example, traffic. If they were to do apartment buildings in that property, and there certainly would be more of an impact related to services, traffic, etc. So that was considered and they did decide that this would be one of, one of, if not the least impactful use that could be developed on that property. A reminder, it is zoned, community, commercial.
Commissioners. When we started this application, we had a very different application about a year and a half ago where we had some flex buildings and we had some storage and through public feedback. The feedback of this commission as well as Valley County, we have the project for you today. So, you know, part of the consideration of, of what we're wanting to do with setting a standard for this particular area of Sampson Trail. Is really help. Define an area that right now really hasn't been set for a scenic byway, this is the language that will be established for this space. And it's been an honor to work on that with this commission, so with that, we've, you know, patiently tried to refine. Our designer view application for the last five months and take that feedback. Drastically changing the orientation of the buildings is not an easy task, but it's something that we were very willing to do because we saw. Feedback and the comments that came from this commission as far as concerns for that front edge and wanted to make sure that we address those, and so. I sincerely appreciate that feedback and do think that we take it to heart and I thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Again, any other questions for staff or applicant? Alright, with that, I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Hi. Any opposed? The hearings closed? Alright, Meredith, I believe we need to go over the items for design review and scenic route.
Okay, designer view criteria, the commission shall determine the following before approval is given. A, the project is in general conformance with the comprehensive plan.
It is a permitted use and.
Or it's a conditional use.
Conditional use.
Thinking generally, it does kind of go with the comprehensive plan based on. The zoning and potential uses are allowed, even if there are conditional use permit, it's not denied for enough. Able to, so it's not that, it's, there is, it does fit within that.
So the comp plan as it sits is further from the south, it's residential. Right, is it to the, to the? East of this project is residential or is that also community commercial or is it just the block to the west of Sampson?
Sampson is the border.
Sampson's the border, so you have, as best the comp plan currently sits, it's residential all the way up and then there's this block that's set, sets aside, does that go all the way up to?
Yes. Yes, commercial. So the houses to the northbound, we are commercial zone. There was a nursery there, but it's not, I think, the owners. It's zoning.
Okay, so currently this is just the edge of a commercial zone?
Yep. Ready for B? Yeah. B, the project does not jeopardize the health, safety or welfare of the public, do you agree, disagree, why?
Bill, there's going to be a lot more of the public involved, this facility if it's constructed. I don't know if that jeopardizes the health and safety of. The public, but. There'll be more congestion. Simply from traveling in and out of the facility and, and also the. Changes to the sidewalk. Or congestion traffic that will appear on there because of the, because of, it is a thoroughfare to the school. It's just my thinking on that.
As part of the design, they incorporated. Pedestrian means vehicular access, the places secured. Et cetera, so I don't see clear dealing with the drainage. Or not, they're compliant with all codes that pertain to the health and safety. So.
Well, I'm not saying that it will happen, I'm just saying that this, this, it changes in the configuration of that particular area of Sampson Trail. Just something to consider.
Yeah, and I'd say, I, you know, it being really, I mean, the pathway is going to be an improvement. To, to the health and safety, so they're not going along the roads, I think that helps. I think the fencing and the setbacks helped for being, going on to the road. I don't, I don't think it's a, really jeopardizes it.
Was that, I'm sorry, was the path being paved and, and there is it going to be the current, that kind of ass, recycled asphalt path?
I think it was just gravel, I don't believe there's anything to paving.
Just the same as what's currently there.
I think there will be plans in the future.
But the gravel standard is what the county's adopted.
Yeah.
I think it's wider too. Current one is maybe thirty six wide or something.
Cat, you ready for C?
Yes.
Project conforms to the applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance as enumerated in section 3.1601, which is the design review chapter.
Conforms to those requirements, it does not apply to the subdivision.
It's not a subdivision at this time.
Yes, at this point, it does, yeah.
Ready for D? Project will have no substantial impact on adjacent properties or on the community at large. Your magic word is, what does substantial mean?
So currently there's industrial use immediately to the south of it and to the west of it. So I don't see any impact on those. What they are doing to, you know, buffer. Improvement along Sampson Trail, both as a scenic route, which will get there. To try to create a buffer between that and that's the, which is on the side. Especially when you're going with, I've mentioned, less buildings, orientation of these buildings. Allow more review corridor. They've done the best they can, so. We've, we've approved something similar on Boydston, keep coming back to that, just because that was done in a similar situation. It was, as, it, it was approved as a buffer between residential and industrial. That's what's happening here. I, I think they've done a better job than what they did on Boydston, frankly.
And that was, that was an industrial zone, I think, you know, it was supposed to be for condo units over there?
No, it was residential across the road, yeah. But the, where those were constructed immediately to south is the industrial park. And then to the north of. Those and to the east are residential, side of the street.
It's interesting, we. We only have, there's like three main. Roads from the south into this town and, and if you go over Mission, you've got a light industrial zone. Over there, metal buildings as you come into town. The highway. I mean, that's bound to be commercial retail on its way into town, Sampson Trail, in my mind, in my opinion. It's kind of your last residential pedestrian corridor into town, you have carefree, anybody that would come in from. Farm to market. Just that whole zone, so there. This is kind of a beachhead into what would be, and I know there's other. I'm sure there will be more things down the road. So all of our, all of our roads into town from the south will be. Metal buildings, storage units and. And so it's, in my mind, it's kind of our last opportunity. To have something that's, that's kind of residential and pedestrian from the south and I, I mean, I appreciate your efforts, it's been a long. Been a long journey, it's been a contentious. Journey, you know, and the county commissioners have, have. Made their decision and it's up to us to decide. Aesthetics on this, I guess that's kind of what we're down to. So I guess, I just wanted to make that comment. You know, just in terms of general zoning and how, you know, what, how, what do we want this town to look like eventually? And this is, this is one of our last opportunities to have, to have a residential pedestrian corridor in town, the rest will be, they are meant for those. That's my two cents on the, on the general zoning. I guess I agree with Tom in that and, and. The Sam's comment, they've done the best they can, but I still don't think it fits. What? My version of a scenic route is now. In six months, probably we won't be having these conversations anymore, but. We are today. So we get to debate that.
I think something to keep in mind too, with the history of the property, it was owned commercial before it was a scenic route. Seen a route designation. Fairly recent. So.
But we're not dealing with historicals.
I know, but you gotta keep in mind that commercial was there. And it's not just a brand new thing, that it was. In the past, designed for that, still designed for that with envision of commercial in that area.
A commercial buffer, a commercial, sorry.
Commercial zone. No set zoning, but it again, wasn't the scenic route at that point in time when they were zoning it, that. So the zoning scheme after the scenic routes come after, which puts a unique thing in our.
And that's what this project has to conform, but it doesn't matter what it was before.
But it could be even more high density, so looking at it now. Maybe potentially lower impact than some commercial components that could go. Is my.
Well, having the county commissioner said that it has to be a storage unit?
Well, they've approved that part, yeah, we're just doing aesthetics, we can't.
Yeah, so they've raised, give, give us the criteria to, what, what it's going to be, we just have to prove the nuts and bolts of the whole thing, right?
Yes.
I guess it's, it's a moot point as far as what it used to be or whatever.
Yeah. Let's get to that item. Okay.
Okay, E, if applicable, a subdivision design review document has been reviewed and approved by the commission in lieu of design guidelines.
Not applicable.
F, if, for projects in the shoreline and river environment zone. Dot com. G, for projects in the scenic route zone, the project will preserve and enhance the scenic quality of the street or highway, proceed directly to. Standards. So the commission shall ascertain whether the provoke, proposed development, improvement or use will, one, block or disrupt the visibility of significant views or features.
I think with the new design. Doesn't significantly block, there are small sections, but I think. It's reduced the amount of blockage with the, just the two buildings turned in that direction and with the setbacks being farther technically low, a bit lower in elevation. So I don't think it's significantly blocking. There is some blocking, but.
If you want the fence to be transparent. That means, yes, an option on the table.
Yeah, I think with my comments, it would be that as much transparency as we can with events to avoid that as well.
So on that comment of the four fence plans, which do you prefer? I like three or four. I'm, I don't, I can't picture how the, you know, quadrant versus just the panel would work, but three or four have that open fencing in front of the building, which I like better than the closed fencing. In front of the building.
Do a tally.
I was gonna say, I kind of like two with the, I mean, the one's blocking, the building doesn't concern me too much. It's just everything else being as open as possible and two is the full, full fence without the two panels, it's the full panel. I, I'm leaning towards two.
And I would say one has a little bit more decorative features.
Yeah. Cause one is like two panel example, they have the larger fixture with the color, so. I'm not opposed to one.
For me, I would say one is a lot more maintenance than two. I do think about those kind of things, so.
I can like spray.
You're, which, which.
It, it seems like it works better than it would be. It's more, more decorative in, in ways. You like three, two?
Yes, I'm hearing three, I'm hearing one.
I think we hear three threes.
I, I'm, I'm, it's wrong, we're on two, I'm, I'm good with two.
Couple twos.
You don't have to maintain, that's it.
That's a good point.
Which one has some.
And Meredith, if you zoom in just a bit, it'll fix the. Weird. Or maybe not, that's on mine. You must have a better computer than I do. You get one, then it gets weird.
I tried to do that on my computer too, I had the same thing, it's like, what in the?
Then not like.
Okay, I'm hearing three, I'm hearing two, I'm hearing one.
He's fine.
Three votes for three, three votes for three, three votes for three, yeah. Where we are.
Are you like?
I'm, I'm okay.
Do you wanna see the building behind the fence, or do you not wanna see the building?
Yeah, I mean. I guess my only reasoning for two, well, two reasons, is one, I don't really care about seeing through to see the building. I like more that it's open away from the building, so as you're, once you pass the building, it's more see-through. Both pedestrian level and then anywhere beyond that, as far as properties cross the street, it's just less of a a blockage, is, but, I mean, I, I could go either way, but I just think it's more open.
Yeah, I see that logic. You've convinced me. I, I do like having the open go far along the fence line, I definitely like that. I'm hearing a two. Anyone? Yeah, I'll take two now.
Two, for me.
Back to your criteria. Your scenic route criteria number two. The development improvement or use must be compatible in terms of setback bulk height design, finished materials, signing and landscaping with its immediate surroundings, and the desired visual quality of the scenic route. So with your new fence design and exterior finished materials options, do any of those speak to you more or differently than the others? So I was hoping for more architectural interest, not just a change in paint colors. I understand I used the word zhuzh last time, and that's probably not specific enough. So yeah, my, my goal was to make it look less square, blocky, and more visually architecturally interesting, but understanding that, one, we don't wanna have massive artificial facades, and two, it's storage units, so it is gonna have inherently boxy nature to it, so I'm conflicted.
I certainly don't like the green one, especially the color, way it jumps out.
I agree with that, the green and the rendering, I think is pretty, pretty harsh. Yeah.
I do like the wood looks.
I didn't like the green, that's what I'm interested. Brown, you can call.
What materials are we talking about again?
There is a box that you may touch.
Yeah, that you feel.
The technical evidences, it's in the record, so if you would like to look at them, touch them for what they are.
Yeah.
We may do so.
For sure.
But, but brown stuff.
So that's, this first one, best one is the white for option one. This is the green, it's on rendition, correct?
Okay, so look at that one second. Guessing this looks to be like, would this be the gray on option one and two? Or the, or just one? Not gray, but I mean the. Could I do this? Interesting. Seems put together.
I read it.
It do?
And almost keep it together.
All this piece.
Okay, I see what you're doing.
So, is that the white? So, this one, I do the first one.
I think she. Okay, so I think, yeah, these are the three options, I see. If there's more colors than.
More colors. It's a combination thereof, but your gray one is labeled as gray on here.
Okay.
And then that, where did all of those ones go? And then your brown one is labeled on there. And then with your little cards, those are going to be the painted materials. Slash metal chunks.
So this is a fence?
No, 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 that's.
That's this part, this part right here.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and that would be. Okay, I've seen them now.
This one is the fence. The wooden-ish fence.
It's the darker, this is this year. When we have the fence.
Summary, your samples are probably muted in comparison to your images.
Don't even hear stuff, that's.
All right, Liz, sorry, you can't see some of the samples we have, but just gonna move around over, pulling over something and for the exterior siding.
Sounds good, I'll trust your guys' judgment.
I guess I'm not in favor of the green at all, and between the other two, I think having that big white facade blends would blend in less, so I would go with the option two.
Yeah, I think I agree with that. An option two, the bronze, or is it more the gray?
It's option two, the bronze, right? Then it's the cedar, the cherry. There's just.
The brown scheme includes bronze, the gray scheme includes midnight black.
All right, am I hearing a consensus for option two?
This is option.
That's option two.
Gray, brown, gray, brown, gray.
Is that, finish that item on. Everywhere.
If you feel that decision satisfies number two, then I have no more criteria to throw at you from a decision-making perspective.
Okay, I think we've addressed, then obviously, all the criteria. Any other thoughts, questions, discussion, or open for a motion?
There was some stuff added in here, the green on the recommended conditions of approval, sentencing permits, and then there was the lease agreement. We did talk about that.
You could probably make the recommended conditions, or, let me see which condition makes sense. You could do number four, and that would allow staff time to work with Bill's office and the applicant to figure out which conditions make sense anymore, since this is a tangled web to weave, so that would allow us to bring you back findings and conclusions that was more correct, appropriate to exact context, conditions that address the septic system, address the not septic system, et cetera. Currently, the plans that we have re-include a septic system in a site that is perked. So a lease agreement prohibiting long time hanging out on the property would not be required anymore, because you'd be able to meet the applicable building codes without such a thing. But then there's other conditions of approval in there that relate to, again, tying back to the county's request for a subdivision plat, and I, I would leave it more to Bill and the applicant's attorney to determine which conditions of approval make sense. That would come back to you on the next meeting as findings of, not the next meeting, the August meeting, for you to review as findings and conclusions, so we could put that on to, pull it off the consent agenda to make sure it reflects what makes sense to you. But I did my best in this condition section with the chaos I have in front of me.
We have a septic system again?
We do, that was vetted at the last meeting, they had a perk location that had previously perked that reor- reorienting all the buildings, they have a system that'll fit, and a letter from Mike Reno should be.
We're not making the decision on that. Well, I think, yeah, sounds like we've got here, here. Yeah.
So to give us the space to smush the conditions a bit, number four would be your motion that makes the most sense. With the modification of the denial part at the end.
I was gonna say, yeah, I was gonna say, just look at that, like, oh, no, they had the denial.
Sorry.
Oh, no, yeah, yeah.
Well, I can give it a shot.
All yours.
I moved to, okay, I moved to continue, I moved to continue design review twenty-four dash twenty-eight and scenic route twenty-four dash eleven to the August fifth meeting to allow time for staff to revise the conditions of approval and develop findings and conclusions consistent with the commission's deliberations.
Quick question, were we, are we gonna continue, or are we gonna approve?
No, it's consistent with denial, or consistent with approval, sorry, there's a lot going on.
At consistent, consistent with approval.
Yes, so then the language that we draft and bring before you, that goes on the agenda, and your signature certifies then it's approval.
Okay, so it's not really, it's continuing, but it's continuing based on approval?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to rephrase? Sure.
Probably should, on this one.
I moved to continue design review twenty-four dash twenty-eight and scenic route twenty-four dash eleven to the August fifth meeting to allow staff to review and consolidate the conditions of approval and develop findings and conclusions consistent with approval.
Second time, we have a motion in a second, let's do a roll call.
Chairman Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Petty?
No.
Commissioner Rock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moss?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Milfe?
No.
Commissioner Paz, absent, Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, that's three of five.
Three of five, motion, carries. Thank you. Hey.
You're going a bit along with him.
They're here, Jeff.
Here I am.
Okay. We go on, I think we actually have a sign this time.
You do, but I didn't put it in your packet, so you get to see it next.
All right, and then upcoming meeting agendas, we have special meeting then night.
Yes, so, well, tomorrow, if any of you intend, we have the, it's kinda like a town hall community conversation on where we're at on the impact area. And that is in advance of Monday, which is the public hearing before the county commissioners on their version of the impact area map.
Is there a meeting gonna be up here or down there?
It's down in Cascade, it's at two P M. The city and city council has submitted a full three hundred and fifty-page packet with a bunch of G I S digital files to reiterate what our community believes to be the likely your, your best impact area should be. And you are all encouraged to show up at that meeting, it might actually be pretty crowded and toasty in there, what it sounds like, but your presence is appreciated.
Have they issued anything prior to that meeting, or they're waiting for that meeting to?
Um, what we know thus far is the map that they have. They should be posting the staff report here soon for the protocol.
I got some of the mail.
The real good gun, the.
Lines. Yes.
The one tomorrow is here.
Is here at eight thirty.
Six thirty is kind of an open forum.
Yep, and so.
That's just a forum, nothing to do with this, the camp, not to do with the commissioners, it's just a public forum.
Yeah, and so we'll be split up into tables, there'll be a council member at, at each table, a staff member at each table, and then we would split you guys up as you come in, so that you don't accidentally quorum yourselves. And then we'll go through a series of, of questions and, and information prepared by Michelle and the communications manager, Erin Greaves, mostly to better educate the public on what this community believes the stakes of this are, especially related to scenic highways and water quality. And then with that, we hope that the public will, will go down to Cascade on Monday, the seventh, to express their thoughts. We will continue to learn more about the timeline for ultimate giant changes to everything that we do, but we're still operating with business as usual until we get a formal notification of who needs to be fired, when. So I'm gonna keep you as long as I can, that's my goal. I'm gonna force you to keep coming and spending time with me. And then after Monday, we have our oopsie daisy meeting on July ninth, which is Wednesday, at the usual time, which is four thirty, and that is just going to be to review one application, the vacation that you see on your upcoming meeting agenda, they failed to provide us materials by the drop-in date, so they will potentially appear on the August agenda. So.
When did, what's that?
The ninth, next Wednesday, you have another planning and zoning meeting in this room here with me to do the same stuff, but it's only one project. Wow. So if we're here until eight thirty, I might get mad at you. No, we're not doing that one anymore.
Which one are we not doing?
What?
We're not doing the vacation in record.
Oh, vacation, again, the one thing on First Street, that we've seen a few times with this, the new.
The new proof, First Street.
Clear it left?
Yes.
Nice, Wednesday the ninth, no, it's a Wednesday.
Any other questions for us while we're here?
I have a question for Bill. Bill?
Chris, go.
So to avoid Bob and I going back and forth with each other all the time. My first meeting, I went out to all of the addresses and looked, and then I was told that, no, I just have to use the information in the record. I can't erase Bob's forty years of McCall knowledge, but I'm just curious, where is that line when we talk about historical uses versus what's being presented to us?
Yeah, I mean, I think you should limit your deliberations to the record that is in front of you. And so, I mean, Bob can certainly, you know, give his prior experience, but, I mean, the rest of the board can weigh it accordingly, I mean, it's I, I mean, I just think about my recollection and memory over the last forty years, and there's things that I remember were great and others not so much. But, yeah, I mean, under the circumstances, it's probably best that we, we limit our deliberation to the facts presented to us by the public, the applicants, and staff. That doesn't mean that, like, you know, you have to totally throw out everything that, you know, comes with living in the community, because that's what makes you good commissioners. But, you know, usually. Um, but, you know, usually. Uh, our, our advice is that, you know, we don't do site visits. Um, because. You know, that, I, I mean, unless as a board, you want to, to have a meeting. At, at a site and everybody sees the same things.
And Bob's. Down more than ten times, and that's kind of where, yeah.
Maybe Robert can work on. Not citing how many times he's been on a property in his expression of thoughts. But that he's been there, like many other people have been there for various reasons.
Yeah, I mean. What we do.
Feel differently.
What we don't. What we don't want is for, you know, one of our commissioners to be testifying. And I think that, you know, we're kind of walking a line there. Um, what we want is for you to take the evidence that's presented to you. And deliberate and make your decision on that. And so, yeah, I mean, sure, your experience in the community is going to color. Uh, your analysis. But, um, my recommendation is that you limit your debate. And deliberations to the evidence presented. At the hearing.
Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
I'll get you the, uh, one of those yellow flags from football. You can just fling.
Yeah, I just, I don't, um. It makes me uncomfortable just to go back and forth with Bob in the public setting, so. Wanted to get. Some clarity for me. That's more for the hockey week.
Alright, anything else that you need from me before I see you in?
Um, anything we didn't know about August?
Does that mean reapplication? What's the story again?
Is that the Elo road one?
Yeah, yeah, I can't say too much about that at this time. Um, I'll be sending them the report in advance. Mostly inquiring why we had to do this again, based on all of the other variables going on, and that's where I'll leave that. Yeah.
We'll get more.
Yeah.
So. Maybe we'll see.
Okay.
Okay. I'm making motion that.
Yeah.
Eight, three, that we adjourned the meeting.
Eight twenty six, Tony.
I can argue with Robert now about. She did it, I didn't say it.
I have a motion, man, second.
All the favor. Get out of here, get out of here.
Thank you.